I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for May 1st, 2019. Roll call.
Budkey, Johnson, Kuhn, Lee, Lunskey, Manichek, Riker, Sandy, here, Lozbit.
Here. Form present. Reading and approval of the minutes from the April 3rd meeting. They're in your packet. Anybody have anything to add or motion or subtract?
Who approval?
Moved by Mr. Riker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Budkey. Discussion, seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved as presented. Item 3-1.
Platte, Edgewood Village, first resubdivision and ordinance dedicating right away.
Mr. Gangler.
Good evening, commissioners. The first thing I'd like to do is formally welcome Sherilyn Jordan. She's our new admin support staff, taking over for Kerry, who recently left. So we welcome Sherilyn, and I'm sure she'll thoroughly enjoy taking meeting minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, she's more of an observer role to kind of absorb how the meeting's function and whatnot, and then next meeting we'll have her on board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
See, the first item, actually, the reports 1 and 2 are part of the same development proposal that you have recently seen, which is the Edgewood Village first resubdivision. So to give you sort of an idea of the locations, the northerly boundary is 40th Avenue South, the southerly boundary is 47th Avenue South, the easterly boundary is the south end drainway, and the westerly boundary is South 19th Street. So to look at the platte that was approved, the only basically change that came out of preliminary approval was to relocate the access point from the map you're looking at on the screen is the vacated South 19th Street. So originally, the driveway location was proposed to enter into that location, and we have another map, too, that we can talk about to clarify that. However, the commission, as well as the council, agreed that the access point should be centered on essentially the center portion of the large facility that will be constructed. So what you see on the right-hand side of the screen where 47th Avenue South is, is now the new driveway location, whereas on further to the, in this case, the west, where 19th Street was, that's no longer there. It's been vacated, and there's no proposed driveway. So as you can tell on the map, as traffic comes into the site, it then can circulate internally in a northerly direction. And then the other access point is the new platted street of South 17th. So all the land uses that were originally proposed have not changed. And again, the city council gave preliminary approval to P&amp;Z's recommendation on April 15th, so therefore, staff would entertain any questions, and we would also recommend final approval and moving on to the city council for final approval.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so any questions before I open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
From this platte to the west, that South 45th, or 45th Avenue South, was supposed to go into South 19th, is that there?
Currently, that is still a platted street, but we're talking with the park district to make some determinations as to whether that will also be vacated. So those are ongoing discussions that we'll have on a parallel track with this platte.
Okay. And we voted on the vacation last month, and not again this month?
Right. For vacations, the commission addresses a vacation once, then it gets sent to the city council, where then they do a first reading and call for a second reading and final approval. So all those should catch up with each other at the May 20th city council meeting.
Okay. Good questions. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to step to the microphone, address items 3-1, please do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Riker.
Move approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, I heard, I guess. Sorry to interrupt you. Discussion, seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3-1 passes. 3-2.
Ordinance to amend the zoning map, Southern Estates Plan Unit Development, PUD, amendment number 12.
Mr. Gangler.
And this is the, you just acted on the actual platte. Item 3-2 is the zoning for the proposed project. Staff does recommend final approval.
Again, we have a public hearing. Any questions before I throw it out there? Seeing nothing, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who'd like to walk up to the microphone, address item 3-2, do throw it this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Riker.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Riker.
Second.
Second by Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 3-2 passes. 3-3.
Platte, Southern Estates, 12th resubdivision and ordinance dedicating right away.
Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Chairman. So this item was before us last fall, end of the last summer, actually. It's located along Columbia Road. On the north half of where we're at here is 40th Avenue, 47th on the south. The area we're going to be talking about is this area here. It's Southern Estates, just like the other ones, but Southern Estates is a very large area. So specifically, we're talking between 40th and 45th on the east side of Columbia. So currently, the zoning on that area is commercial, but it is unplatted property. The developer came before this commission last year, and there was a request for the access road on 43rd to go through the development. In addition, on Star Avenue, they were looking at a connection here along the pond and then would connect up. I'll throw up the air photo here, too, for a little bit of visual clues of where we're at here again. So this was the other connection that they were looking for. So at that time, they really received preliminary approval in July, and it was to come back in August for final, but not before we went back through the neighborhood meeting. Neighborhood had many concerns about those vehicle accesses that specifically the points here at Star Avenue and here at 43rd were majority of the comments that we heard and concerns. And so the developer came back with a plan to remove those. And so we had a neighborhood meeting last week, and I'll pull up the platte here. So here's where the one connection was going to be, was at Star Avenue connecting here. And so they've removed that and put a residential lot all along this stretch here. So you see 21 lots all up and down on the west side of South 25th Street, this being Columbia over here. In addition, they removed the connection here at 43rd Avenue. The one thing, and I think it's an important note from staff, is that we did ask for, currently, and I apologize, I'm going to have to go back and forth here a little bit, and I'll zoom in on this area. Currently, there is a path, although gravel, in this area here along the west side of the pond, south to the west, and then it connects up to 40th Avenue. It doesn't cross the drainway there, cuts across, and then connects up with 40th up here. That was an established area that was done about the time the Discovery School had opened. That was the only place to do a connection and then meet to a controlled access, a controlled intersection, which would have been 40th and Columbia. So what we've asked for is to maintain this through a right-of-way, 15-foot. I think there's still some conversations on how that'll occur, but we want to maintain that access. I don't think there's necessarily disagreement with maintaining that from the developer. In addition, we've asked for 43rd for a connection through here to eventually line up with this light here. So at the time that this light would go in, this connection would be put in as well, because what happens then is this becomes the shortest distance, as we know, kids are going to take that shortest distance through, so staff has asked for that.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian access through, on the north side of where 43rd would be, it would be pedestrian only, and it would connect through and be timed with the light. So it wouldn't go in until the light went in. The concern is, is that kids that live in this area or in the apartments, they're going to take that shortest distance across. Focusing right now on the school, they're not likely to backtrack. They'll take that shortest distance and cut through. And we don't think it's as likely that they'll come up to 40th and then across, so we want to provide the safest route possible. And typically, that's the shortest routes when it comes to most kids. In addition, we think that you also have the case where a lot of kids on this side are going to be coming across either to access the commercial lots that are going to be left or to head on to the middle school, which is just off the south side of the map here as well. So there's some back and forth that occurs there. So when we fully develop this whole area, we just know that's going to happen. Just for your information as well, there's a commercial lot here along the west side of Columbia Road, commercial lot here, multifamily here, commercial lot here, multifamily here, and then, of course, commercial here. So I just wanted to lay that out so everybody kind of sees what the future planning was for that area as well. Those have been in place as well for quite some time. The intersection here is a three-quarter, so that's not going to be a planned pedestrian. So I just wanted to point that out as a reason why we were looking for the pedestrian connection there. So with that, the main items that we're looking at, since the zoning's already in place, the biggest item that we see is the added benefit of having the single two-family dwellings that are going to buffer the existing commercial on the west side of 25th. So we feel that's an added benefit to the neighborhood overall, and that's one of the biggest benefits. And I'm talking zoning as well, even though we have the platte first, but clearly, those are single two-family lots that are shown up along the west side of 25th. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. We have done mailing. We did our neighborhood meeting last week. I would say that there was support for it. That's the way I finished the meeting. I've heard a few calls since, concerns about a few items, but we did pass out comments that we've received. They're at your table there, stapled together. I think we stapled them chronologically as they were received. So you'll see a mix of support, some concern for the pedestrian, but I did want to emphasize as to the reasons why. It's not just kids going to school. We're going to end up with kids accessing the commercial areas here, too. And you know, there may even be some neighbors, and this was one comment that was made at the meeting, that if there is a restaurant over here, I would like to have a connection go across into that neighborhood, so I don't have to get in my car and walk over.
So at this time, the platte you're asking for does not have the connection in there?
Right. They will be making those changes based on the comments that we've had. So they're working on where those all fit. I think there's a desire on their part to put the northern connection onto the pond lot, and I'm not too sure where that sits today, but that is something that will work out by final. But without that, then we'd want to, about a foot and a half taken off of each lot to essentially make it so there's enough room. But there may be another option that they're working on that may be beneficial to everybody. The main thing for us is to have that pedestrian connection there.
So developers are asking right now to give the row town homes in this platte, right, platted out?
That's correct.
And that's about it, as far as we know?
Yeah. Well, they're looking for approval on the platte. The next item is the zoning, but I just kind of tied them all together.
Right. And that's fine. I know, Ms. Sandy, do you have, I have a public hearing, too, but I know you had something?
Yeah, I'm just, so tonight, are we talking about the stoplight and the pedestrian walkway on 40th? As part of?
Yeah. The recommendation is for the connection across. I think the, we're not talking about approving a light or not here, but I think the assumption is, is that once the, once the traffic gets there, is that the light will go in likely at 43rd? I mean, that's...
So is there a light at, going to be a light at 45th?
No, that's a three-quarter intersection right now, and that's, it's set up the way I think it's going to be long-term, but I should probably defer those questions to Al.
And then, so the developer doesn't necessarily want the pedestrian walkway?
It was a city request. Their initial proposal did not have those in.
Okay. Because I've gotten calls against that, and I know when we sat and looked at the last design that they brought forward, the discussion was too many crossings for these little kids, and they're not being supervised. So if we put it there, they'll use it, and there aren't enough crossing yards for all of these things. So I guess another question I have, what does the school district say?
I sent an email to the principal at Discovery last week. I just haven't heard back from her as of yet.
And safety?
Same. I haven't heard back.
So I'm a little concerned about adding another walkway for those little kids without having some sort of conversation with the school district and safety, because they're going to use that even if, even if the school says, hey, you know what, we really need these kids to all funnel through this stoplight. If there's a way to get across, they're going to...
Yeah. My concern is trying to funnel the kids doesn't typically work, that if we're going to, because we have to look at not just school kids, we have to look at, you know, kids coming home from school, we have to look at kids heading to, if there's, if one of these stores ends up being a kid that wants to come across and grab a, you know, whatever it is, if it's an ice cream shop or whatever, they're going to want to cross at this location. And for these kids, they're going to want to do shortest distance through.
If there isn't a way to do that, then they can't. So if we create that...
I think they'll hop fences. I think they'll, so...
No, they're not going to cross a six-foot, hop a six-foot fence.
What feels like 14 times a day, I am driving from my house to South Little School, and I have never seen a kid cross anywhere than at that 40th stoplight.
Because it's been a field up until now.
Yeah, but there's a stop, I mean, sure, there's, but I just, I have, that's my only problem. Otherwise, I think this looks great, and from what I've heard from the people who I've talked to on the phone, they like this design, but there's a concern about adding that pedestrian walkway and stoplight. And then, again, I'm concerned, I wouldn't, I don't feel comfortable moving this forward without having any conversation with the school district, because I think that they should have the most of this. Because they're the ones that have to, staff goes, goes stoplights. Of course, it doesn't seem fair to the developer either that we hold anything up.
Right. And if we were to funnel to one, I would think it would be better to funnel to 43rd, to have everybody from this neighborhood come and cross at 43rd, this neighborhood to cross at 43rd in terms of a school crossing, because it lines up. So if we were to do one, I think it would be better to have it at 43rd and Columbia rather than 40th and Columbia.
Oh, we're not going to take that out. I mean, that's already there. The thing is, they could, I guess my point is, and then I'll just, and then I'll leave this alone, but you can tell kids all day long which one they should use. If it's there, they're going to use it. So you can tell kids, you have to use 43rd, the 40th is still going to be there, so they're going to, they're going to use that. And I think that the last time this came forward, the concern from the neighborhood to me wasn't even traffic as much as it was kids going back and forth to school. So we're still going to have that. And if it wasn't the developer's request...
It wasn't, no. It was cities. So, and I'll just, I want to at least put this one more piece in. Somebody from the apartment would be expected to come up to 40th and then cross here and then go to the school.
Well, there's 47th.
No, somebody from the apartment can go, as I'm trying to move your map with my finger, they can go to 47th to Columbia. That's what they're going to go. They're not going to go through that, and we don't want them to go through that neighborhood.
So what they would, I would envision them heading to 45th, and if there's a light here...
Yeah.
They're going to go to 43rd.
They'll come across 45th, because there's going to be a sidewalk there, and they'll come up to 43rd.
Sure.
And then cross.
Is 43rd just an pedestrian light crosswalk?
Well, isn't...
There's eventually going, you know, with the amount of traffic that is going to be there, just like on Washington and 44th, we put in a light, I would anticipate a light at 43rd and Columbia eventually.
For three-way traffic, or three-way intersection?
It'll be, there'll be an entrance in here, so there'll be a lot, there will be an opening on the platte to allow for cars to go in and out at that location there. One leg will go into private property.
So the kids...
Please.
The kids can...
Thanks for being politically correct.
The kids can just as easily take the path that's already there by the pond.
The kids that are in this area here?
And I will also say, in those 14 trips every day, there aren't, I don't see a whole bunch of kids walking from that apartment building. I mean, that's, it's a long haul, but still, you could take 25th down and cross over at the pond and cross over 40th, and it's not, it's not a long distance.
When we left this last time, when I asked Mr. Gangler, I was trying to have him catch my mind up, we had that connection from Star still going up to 40th, correct?
Yeah, last time you saw it.
And that, that, I think the best thing would be, let's, I think if you guys are good, yeah, we're going to, you guys okay? Let's open the public hearing, hear from the developer, hear from anybody else who wants to talk, get their input, and then we'll bring this back. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to come up to the microphone, address item 3-3, please do so at this time. We'll be gentle. Just state your name, address, and stuff for the record, please.
Sanford Case, 2164 43rd Avenue South. Want to say that this plan from the developer is greatly improved from what came forward last summer, and overall, I support that. The only thing I have an issue with is the sidewalk at 43rd. I just see it as a real safety problem when you're going to send small children through commercial areas with multiple drives into the businesses on both sides of Columbia, and I think we should discourage children from going that way. And if not having the sidewalk through to the neighborhood can help that, then I think it should be eliminated.
Thank you very much. Well said.
Thank you.
My name's Tyler Brandt. I'm from Fargo, North Dakota. I am the developer, one of the developers on this project. You know, originally, we did kind of want connection to the homes so people could use, you know, the back entrance instead of going around to get to the commercial portion of this, of this property. And, you know, we didn't, now that we see more that there's a school there, we understand it, so we decided to put in the townhomes just to shut it off completely. And then we came to the city, you know, the meeting, and the city said, well, we want it. And now, you know, some other people are saying, we want another street because of fire and ambulance, and you're going to put 20 townhomes here? So there's going to be 40 more cars backing out, trying to get out somewhere. So they're going to have to take 45th, or they're going to have to, and you've got three-quarter turns and stuff. So you do have a little bit more to think about than, this was originally part of the original plan 20 years ago, is to have the roads through there. We're totally fine not having them, but we do want to start on this project. We have tenants for some of the office, and so we're kind of going, just tell us what to do. Don't table it again. Tell us what to do, and we'll do it.
Tenants for these commercial lots?
Some office lots.
Talk to me about that. What are you looking at putting in?
Um, there's...
Just, I don't even care, you don't have to give me names or anything, but just where are, what part of these?
The office lots are further to the south half, and then the north half is more the commercial. So the north of 43rd would be commercial, hopefully a dry cleaner, restaurants.
So you're ready, you're ready to develop the stuff to the west of these townhomes?
We would, yes. We would start with the office buildings right of way and a couple pieces of commercial, and as they progress, we will continue to build more commercial.
So with the city staff telling you that we'd like to see a sidewalk through there, any thoughts on designing so that thing's going to be safe and not dumping into the back end of a commercial district? Just to be honest, I'm not going to table it right now. I do appreciate you coming and being, you guys have been great to work with on this, we really have. So just get into our heads, how are we going to get, how are you going, how would we ever get kids through a back end of a commercial property to a street?
No, you know, we have concerns about that, too. It's not, you know, but we do know that there's a lot of homes over here, and there's a school over here. So we're going to have that cross-traffic, and, you know, we're willing, originally, when I, when we even talked about the road going through, we said, let's do a table, you know, where you hit a bump, and then you come down, and you have really slow traffic, because when we looked at it, we went, well, the traffic's not going anywhere when it goes east. It bumps into the softball diamond, so there shouldn't be a ton of traffic going through. But again, we let it go, and it's fine, but, so now, we don't care. We'd rather sell another townhome, quite honestly, than have a sidewalk through, but I do kind of agree that, I think some of the neighbors would probably like to walk over and walk to a restaurant and sit outside, you know, and, but that's completely, that doesn't, it's up to you guys to make that decision. We're willing to work with, through anything.
It's, we appreciate that. Would anything, I don't know how Star ever got killed, that must have been a city council meeting, I didn't find out, go to, would that Star Avenue going back up to 40th be advantageous, or has that ship sailed? Mr. Brooks, I guess I'm looking at you a little bit. I guess I thought we made a concession on that for 43rd, with the developer...
Yeah, they're asking for a connection here. We're just going to make that a private if they go across and connect here. It would just dump into here.
I'm talking a street.
No, I think, I think we heard, we heard more that people just didn't want anything, and I think that's what they heard as well. That's why it's been removed. I think they would have been fine keeping it. You know, they did want the connection to the backside, like Tyler said.
And I just, and I know it's been a while, maybe I should have read up more. I thought that was our concession for getting, was the neighborhood is pretty happy if we were to remove 43rd from going through that commercial lot to Columbia and leaving Star at that time, back to 40th, that keeping all the kids, all the traffic going back to 40th, which is a larger controlled street. I'm just wondering what I missed here. I'm not saying the developer asked for that, because they're, they're basically just want to get this thing going, I could tell that. But I guess I missed that. Help me out, please.
Well, I don't know.
Save me.
You're under that, my question is, that path then, that walks by Star, the neighborhood would be able to use that and come back around behind if they wanted to walk to restaurants or...
And it's gravel at this point.
But it won't be gravel, right?
Hopefully, we could push something. So who maintains that?
So there still is walking access.
Who maintains that? The city, then?
Yeah, the city maintains that now, and I imagine, in this case, I think we would maintain its bike path as opposed, I believe this one we maintain. There's not a lot to do in the summer. Winter is, the bombardier gets out there, and there's a whole schedule that our streets department has on terms of.
I guess the public hearing's still open, so if anybody else didn't want to cut anybody off, if anybody else has anything to say on this item, anything further, sir? I kind of cut you off.
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank, thank you. Please state your name for the...
Hi, I'm Darren Mitchell. I live at the corner of 42nd Avenue South and South 25th Street. Like yourself, we picked this up last year, and I think the original plan that was brought forth was fine, and I was in favor of it. I had no issues with it. I liked both of the roads in there, because it seemed like they were funneling all the kids to 43rd, which was going to be the main controlled lighted, you know, stoplighted intersection. And then, when we got to the neighborhood meeting last year, there was a lot of concerns, and I only heard concerns about 43rd and increased traffic. I didn't hear anything about Star or changing the Star connection. And then this year, when we got the notification for the neighborhood meeting, we saw that all the roads had been removed and that they wanted to add the path. And I think that we're fooling ourselves if we think that this is going to develop and that those kids are not going to cross at 43rd, because they are. So if we don't have a path or some way to do it the right way and put it in the right way, then that ship has sailed, because this is going to develop. way, then that ship has sailed, because this is gonna develop. Obviously, the developer and the landowner, it's gonna develop quickly, and these kids, if you think that you're gonna cut it off with townhomes, they're gonna come from the west to the east, and they're gonna cross where they're not supposed to. So I think the best plan of action for this is to put it in at Forty-Third where it was always planned to be, and put it in the right way and get it done the right way, because it's a lot easier if you think that you're gonna funnel all those kids to a gravel path on Forty-oth. I live right there in South Twenty-Fifth, I have a very good vantage point, I can sit out on my front porch, and I can tell you, these kids will come back and forth if we don't do it the right way. I'm much more in favor of putting the roads back in, but if we don't have the roads back in, the road at Star and a path at Forty-Third to go through and done the right way would be much better. And I know me and a few of my neighbors have talked about that, so whatever we can do, I think to do it the right way would be the best way. I don't think we should have to table it, you know, the developer is very, very willing to accommodate whatever the wishes of everybody is, so, but that would just be, you know, my two cents or my opinion on that.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing, I'll bring it back to the commission. Mr. Buckey, I saw your hand.
So, I actually happen to think that both camps here are, are correct what I'm hearing, this idea of the pedestrian connection being made, I, I agree with you, Mr. Brooks, that that's gonna be very important, Mr. Mitchell, too. I, I'm, I'm a little confused as to what would guarantee, or like what the design of a, of a pedestrian connection would be, so perhaps I'm in the minority here, but I, I actually imagine that a street, as was originally drawn in earlier sketches, would be better to have an actual public right-of-way there on a street. Now perhaps, uh...
Mr. Grasser.
I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll just, I'll be next.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
Mr. Grasser.
Thank you. Hold on, say it's not working. Um, I think the question, to answer the question, if we designate that as pedestrian way, through the site plan process, we're gonna be able to then bring some of those pedestrian features onto that, some green space, some sidewalk, maybe some limitations about where the parking lots are, and things like that. If we leave all of that off, then it's gonna just be whatever it's gonna be relative to parking lots. So then the question gets to be, yes, they could come around from the north, they can come around from the south, they can do all kinds of accesses, but if they come down, let's say they come down from the, the stormwater pond access, and they want to go to a restaurant halfway down to Forty-Third, they're simply gonna be wandering through a parking lot. We're not gonna be able to provide specific pedestrian access to that, because we don't have any requirements here. Would it be better to fund them through Forty-Third as more direct route with a designed route to get to that location through less distance? That's kind of the, the huddle war going on here, but if, if we, again, if we don't provide any pedestrian requirements into this thing, there, it'll, it'll be parking lots and whatever, but I, I do agree with, with the gentleman in the last estimate, I think children will kind of find a way to get in and around this area, and I think that's why the staff recommendation is, let's not try to fight human nature and provide as safe of a location as we can. That's kind of the theory. Again, it's not a perfect theory, there's lots of alternatives, as we have been pointed out.
Mr. Ayker.
Thank you. I'm gonna move that we approve without the Forty-Third Street, or Forty-Third Avenue walkway.
Second by Ms. Sandy.
So, the re, and...
Please, no, we, we are in discussion.
All right, thank you.
Motion and a second, please discuss.
Thank you, and the reason I do that is, is I still feel very strongly that bringing children across at Forty-Third is a mistake. I don't think that we have what we need, and I don't think we need a, I, I don't think we need a stoplight at Forty-Third, and I think if we put this in, it's more likely to have one there. I appreciate what people are saying, that they think that kids are going to do it anyway. I have my doubts about that. I think you're going to have these people, if they have commercial behind them, they're gonna build a six-foot-high fence, and I can't see a grade schooler jumping a six-foot-high fence in the middle of winter. I just, I don't think it's gonna happen, and I think that the parents over here are going to stop it from happening, plus it's a considerable distance for them to get there, and I don't think that we're gonna have this mass of humanity walking. I, I live right next to a neighborhood school, and there are kids that are two blocks away that are driving, almost all of them, so I appreciate what you're saying, I understand why you're saying it, I think that we are overblowing the fact that these kids are gonna be leaping fences and doing that sort of thing, so that's the reason I do it. I think all the reasons that we discussed ad nauseam, when this thing came about the first time, why we don't want kids going at Forty-Third still, and so that's why I'm going with that.
Thank you, Mr. Ayker.
I'm, I'm gonna agree with Alex, and, and I also want to thank the developer for not giving up on this. And so, to me, this is, hey, we, everybody hashed this out, and they came back to give exactly what the neighborhood was looking for, and now we're telling them, no, we want to open this up again, and we don't have nearly the amount of neighbors here that we had last time, I don't know why that is, but they were very vocal about not having kids cross there, and, and I know the last time we talked about this, fences were discussed, I mean, i-if, if kids are truly just roaming free through private property, then that's a whole different problem. So, I, I too, I don't think that's gonna happen, I, I, they could easily walk through that field right now, even more easily than they could if it was developed, commercial development, and they don't. So, I just, thank you very much for putting up this...
Ms. Trulinski.
Um, if you took the school equations out of this, I think the walking access to the commercial properties would be very good. Want to make sure that we're not ending our sidewalks in the driveway apron of commercial sites, so that there's a walkable space that's safe for people to walk, you're not dodging cars and parking lots. You know, putting the, we couldn't approve this right now without seeing the site plan of the commercial property, so I think canceling the sidewalk at this point with the schools, I think is the right choice.
Thank you, Ms. Trulinski. You know, I tend to agree, and I, I asked the developer, what, what do we, you know, what's your plans for the sidewalk coming through with your commercial space? You know, we got, we got rid of the street, Mr. Buckey, we're not finished, and at that time, we had this place full of people saying they did not want that street, so that ship, I think, has kind of sailed. I, I still am either one of two things, I think we either relook at that Star Avenue tie, or we let the neighborhood know that there's a plan to pave that, to make that a nice bike walk path, something, so it's not just a piece of gravel next to the pond, I worry about that, I worry about, so you know, so I'd like to see where that's gonna go on the Star side, and I like, I agree with pretty much everything Megan said, we gave the concession of blocking that, stopping that, they, the developer stayed with us in the city, thank you, and made it work for them, we hope, and here we are, so I guess, like you said, at this point, I agree.
But, they're saying there's good probability that there's gonna be a stoplight at Forty-Third anyways. Is there gonna be, if there's no sidewalk access from the east, is there still gonna be crosswalks crossing Columbia at that point?
So I mean, if still... If there's a light, there's gonna be.
Right, so you're still gonna have kids coming down Forty-Third, crossing Columbia there, and then either have them going north or south on the east side of Columbia. So now, why not just put an access in to make it shorter? They're gonna cross there anyways, 'cause there's gonna be a crosswalk. I don't think you're gonna stop kids from crossing there if there's a stoplight.
And in terms of the design, and I, I understand there's a lot of concern, but that's staff, if the, if that easement's there, we'll, we'll make sure it's, it's designed, you know, to the best that we can, and, you know, maybe it's tables, like Tyler had mentioned, but we do know that there is gonna be a connection. I know you're saying that it should be three-quarter, but if you live on the west side of Columbia, if you want to make a left to go north, which is the majority of where they're gonna be traveling, then they're gonna all be forced to go to Forty-oth, which means that we're actually causing, we're, we're requiring the kids to cross at the most busy intersection, which is Forty-oth in Columbia, rather than Forty-Third in Columbia, so those are some of the reasons that we, we were recommending. In addition, the neighborhood meeting that we had last week, there was actually a, the reason we brought up the pedestrian access was, we had people asking, what about a pedestrian? So, there, there was probably about twenty folks from the neighborhood there, but I heard more than not from them, they were asking for that, and that's when we brought it up at the meeting, that staff's recommendation is for this, so...
We could always add an amendment at the time of final, if something comes to light and the study comes.
This is final.
This is final?
This is final. Mr. Grasser. Up until, up until we get to Thirty-second, we have stoplights every eight blocks on Columbia, and now, everybody keeps talking about, we're gonna put one at Forty-oth, Forty-Third, and Forty-seventh, so we're talking three and four blocks, where if I say, what I've been saying is, why would we put a stoplight at Forty-Third? Why are we gonna start putting stoplights every four blocks on Columbia when we've been doing them every eight blocks before that? It seems like we want to keep stoplights off of, off of Columbia and keep traffic moving on Columbia. Am I missing something there?
You're missing the one at Thirty-sixth, which is the same distance between Thirty-second and Forty-oth.
Right, but then you go, then you go from Thirty-second, you go north of there, the next one's at Twenty-fourth, that's eight blocks, the next one's...
You're missing Twenty-eighth.
Huh?
You're missing Twenty-eighth.
Buffalo Wild Wings.
Oh, Buffalo Wild Wings, okay. And then, so then you go Twenty-fourth, you go to Seventeenth, or no?
Seventeenth.
Okay, and then Seventeenth, you go to...
Thirteenth or two.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, eleven.
Eleven? Yeah, go ahead.
Ryan, the, the notice that was sent out to the neighborhood, did it include this map and, and describe that there were gonna be pedestrian walkways, or did it just...
No, it did not have the pedestrian walkways. That was a staff comment that was added at the neighborhood meeting.
So this is my, this is another issue that I have with moving it forward. The people didn't come out because they looked at this and they saw that it was townhouses exactly like they asked for, without that crossing over Forty-Third, so without actually sending out in the, the notice of the meeting, that that's what was going to come to us, how would they know that, that they should speak up and contact us, come to this meeting if they didn't see what we're seeing? Because that, and I'm only asking that because that's what their complaint was last time, and so...
And my thought is, we're, we're doing this because we think it's the right thing to do, to, to have that pedestrian access there, because we're trying to look at things as overall safety, that the roads weren't there, I think that was key for them. I don't think the pedestrian was the, was the key point that I...
But we don't know unless we ask them, and I think that it was, and the phone call that I got, and I'm sorry, I didn't, it's just, this is, if it wasn't Columbia, fine, this is a busy road, and this is what everyone came to the meeting about, and so if you send out a notice, and it's not exactly, it's not covering the real hot point that people were upset about, I don't feel like that's a fair part of the meeting. And I don't want to table this either, so the only thing that I can, well, there's already a motion in a second, but...
Okay.
I, I don't know, I don't know how else to get the neighborhood's opinion, and I don't want to make assumptions, because the only feedback that I'm getting is, they love this and appreciate that the developer is doing this, but they don't want, they don't want the Forty-Third, they don't want pedestrian access, and they weren't given, they weren't given that information to know to come to the meeting, because typically, you don't go to a meeting unless there's something that you don't want.
Okay.
Mr. Grasser, I know you had your hand up earlier. Did you get covered?
Uh, I just wanted to go back and cover, you know, when the, the developer came in, and you can correct if that's something has changed, but they originally identified that they wanted to have a three-quarter, or as much access as they could get, obviously at Star, we talked about a three-quarter, and then traffic signal full access on Forty-Third, and they did went through traffic study, and they generated a report that essentially said, at some point in time, as the development progresses out there, there's gonna be warrants for a traffic signal on Forty-Third. Given that a signal will go in there, when we build a signal, we are required by law to accommodate pedestrians, so there's going to be pedestrian crosswalks, those, you know, stop bars and all of that, you know, do not walk, push buttons, and all those things will be there, no matter what else happens, you know, when a signal goes in there, that'll be required, just to be aware of that, I mean, it's...
Right. Yep, thank you for that. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yeah, sorry, Jamie.
And it may, may not have dug far enough in our pockets, but from the neighborhood meeting, do we get a summary from what was going on, or what the feedback, what, what the feedback was from the neighborhood?
Just from the staff report in terms of what we provided to you, some of the comments that you see that are included in there are from...
This thing.
Yeah, there's two of them, I think, that were actually dated from that. One of them was handed, I think, at that meeting, and then the secondary one from Mr. Case actually came in later, but it still will be dated, 'cause he picked up a sheet at that...
Notes or something from those neighborhood meetings for us to kind of analyze?
It's just a lot of dialogue that I'll, I've summarized, so...
And this is a little bit separate, but if the commission members could be invited to those meetings, I think that would be...
We talked about that.
Nice, but when does it go to council?
Twenty.
So there's time for another neighborhood meeting? Could, could we make it the, we, we take this out? Well, the, the meeting was noticed without pedestrian walkway, and that's how the conversation is.
That's what we're real for, is to have pedestrian.
That's how it's stated.
Yeah, that's what we're going to...
They wanted that to happen.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understand that, but I, I wonder, because this is important to the neighborhood, if it would be important for them to see this new information, because if they fill the council chambers and say, hey, you know what, city staff is right, this is what we do actually want, and then the council can, 'cause this is final approval, we don't give them the opportunity.
You're right, you're right.
And, you know, city staff has done their work on this.
If I could ask that one point, perhaps leaving the easement in there, and then we don't construct until we get feedback from the neighborhood that it should be there. Otherwise, we just, it's an eas, you know, that would be the way to do that.
That, that easement will affect how the developer develops that property, that's my fear.
Absolutely, yeah. It's fifteen feet that he would have to do with.
But you could always make easement speeches.
This is fine the way it is.
I, I think we're, I think we're ready for a vote.
Can you remind what exactly the motion is here?
To approve everything except for the sidewalk easement at Forty-Third.
It's to approve the original P E, because that was added, correct?
Right.
Good enough. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, boy, I'm gonna need hands. Roll call. Roll call.
Buckey.
What did I say, Nate?
Yep.
Johnson.
Nate.
Blonsky.
Nate.
Manichek.
Nay.
No.
Reiker.
Yes.
Sandy, yes. Wasdick.
First time in history, yes.
Four yeses, three no's.
Motion carries that it is. I do think it's a good idea to see if we can get something out to neighborhood for city council to get the people's vote on this, I just don't want to hold this project up any longer. Developers have been fantastic on thinking outside the box and bringing this back to us. Agree with everything you said. All right, item three-four.
We had a split vote for once.
Yeah.
Wow, first time in my presidency.
Orders to amend zoning map, Southern Estates, tiny development, P U D amendment number eleven. Oh, I read the rule, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
You're doing great. Mr. Brooks, is that you again?
Three-four is just the zoning.
Okay. Public hearing again, open the public hearing. Anybody would like to step up to microphone and address three-four, please do so. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission.
Move approval.
Second. Move by Reiker and second by Mr. Manichek. Okay, discussion, seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries with... Three-five.
Reply the lots B, C, and D, block one, Business Park, third re-subdivision.
Good evening, we are out in the Business Park, west of I-29, north of Third, Second Avenue South. This item was brought before you previously, a couple months ago, it was tabled... It was tabled at city council so that access could be brought back before you for input. In addition to the access change, there was a slight modification to the lot size. It went from about eight acres down to a little over seven. The access has been evaluated from planning and engineering standpoint, and would allow them to pull through from Twenty-fourth to Forty-eighth with out, without any turnarounds interior to the site. It will function fine, so staff is in favor of the access, additional access, and is recommending approval of the plat.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Ederson before I open the public hearing?
So the right side, we're splitting the lots on the right side, is that, and putting a road in there?
Uh, no, so you're looking at Lot H, this, so we're actually combining two lots and taking a portion of the third.
Okay.
So your boundary essentially is effective about, about there, and so there'll be access here, another access there, and then Twenty-fourth.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to step up and address item three, five, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Johnson?
Is there any access on Twenty-fourth Avenue?
Yes, so the access control stops two hundred feet back onto Twenty-fourth, and the rest is available for them to have one access, yep.
Any other discussion? Not...
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Johnson? Discussion, seeing no hands, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Three, six.
Orders to amend zoning map, Columbia Park, south plan unit development, P U D amendment number three.
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, thank you. So I'll quickly go through this. We're Thirty-second Avenue, south up here, South Twentieth Street. This is, of course, the apartment's gonna escape me, but here's Lithia, Ford Lithia, the other two Lithias are here. It's the spot that's right behind them. They're requesting this to go to a residential, it's gonna be for a senior housing project, and we actually, when, when we originally had this one come through, there was a, originally, this one was, was looked at as well, and conversation was, should we have that as well? The owner at that time wanted to keep it commercial, while they kinda determined what they were gonna do, and now they have decided to go forward with the senior housing, hence the change, so we expect to have a plan come forward, probably even this year. We did do notices on this, and it is a public hearing as well, so, and there may be a representative here, too, from the company, to speak as well if...
Refresh me, what senior housing, is that an R use, or is that...
In this case, they're looking at R three, let me grab my piece here.
But I mean, when I saw R three, I was...
Yeah, that's medium density.
But what, right, but, so it being a senior, senior development doesn't matter, I mean, they're just saying...
No, no, the use is eligible within the R three, yep.
That's right.
Yeah, R four is able to go up to fifty units an acre, and R threes are sixteen units an acre, and this fit actually, within the, the R three, they did ask for a little bit more in the previous lot coverage, so the second page of the P U D map kinda highlights all that information.
Does that match what Stony Point is next door for lot coverage?
Stony Point's probably gonna be a little bit more, actually.
More, so they're asking for less coverage, that's, then, okay.
Yeah, I think, or did we match it? I'd have to look.
Okay, I guess I got a public hearing on this one also. Open the public hearing. Anybody wanna come up and address item three, six, please do so. Please state your name and address and stuff for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Matthew Earthman, Volvo Law Firm, I'm here just representing the owner of Lithia, so just if anyone has any questions, I'm available to answer them from what I am aware.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Pretty easy game.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Reicher.
Move approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lunskey. Discussion, no hands, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Three, six passes. Three, seven.
Orders to amend zoning map, rezoning of single-family homes from B three, general business district, to R two, one, or two-family residence district at thirteen, twenty-four First Avenue, North.
Ms. Ederson.
Thank you. This one's coming back for a final, it's an existing single-family home in the B three that is looking to rezon to the R two for a possible sale. We had reached out to the property owner directly to the east, we haven't had anything back, so if they ever want to rezon in the future, we'd bring it through a similar process, but for right now, we're just looking at that one property.
Okay. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Open the public hearing, anybody in the audience wanna step up and address three, seven, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reicher. Discussion, no hands, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Three, seven passes. Three, eight.
A conditionally used permit for the property located at seventy, twenty-five, Sixteenth Street, southeast, for the purpose of constructing a guest home.
Mr. Gangler.
Well, you're stuck with me for the next few agenda items, anyway. Little background on this, first of all, the, the property owner and the builder are here in the audience if there's any questions as we proceed with the discussion, but a number of years ago, I think it was right around two thousand and six, or two thousand and eight, somewhere, the city adopted an ordinance to allow a guest home in our extraterritorial zoning areas for our A one and A two districts, under certain provisions that we've highlighted in the, in the staff report. Some of the, the more key requirements, that the parcel needs to be at least five acres, in this case, the subject property is over five acres, and there's some other restrictions, or at least conditions, of course, it has to abide by all building setbacks, and there's some other individual provisions that make it unique, probably one of which is the idea that the guest home can only function as, as one would define a guest home. It can't be used as a primary place of residence, it's strictly for a secondary or accessory structure on the property, however, it can be constructed as you would construct a home in terms of all plumbing, fixtures, bathrooms, those types of things. So in terms of where we're located, as we see on the map, we have the Grand Forks Country Club in the southeast part of town. The subject property highlighted in blue is essentially two doors in from the main street, Sixteenth Street. This photo gives you a little closer bird's eye view, where access to the property is taken from the adjoining property to the west, through an access easement into the main residence on the property. Right now, it's kinda hard to tell on the colors, but there's an existing barn structure, or accessory building structure, that would be replaced and rebuilt with the, with the proposed guest home. This was technically two parcels, I, I put in the, the blue hash lines to indicate that the two parcels have been joined together through the county, so in effect, it functions as one property in terms of abiding by building setbacks and whatnot. This is the actual site plan that we're looking at, just to give you the bird's eye view of the overall property relative to the, the main residence and the guest house. In your packet, as well as on your screen, there's some architectural renderings of what the guest house will look like. And again, getting back to the, the provisions of the, of the guest house, they have, the owner has submitted the proper documentation for the declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which essentially is the property owner indicating that the property won't be used for rental, and it'll abide by the conditions that are set forth in the conditional use permit. This type of conditional use permit is designed to where it runs in perpetuity with the land until such time the zoning's changed, or circumstances change. In this case, probably not in our foreseeable future would this part of, of our city go through any, you know, any particular types of zoning changes, or annexation, or those types of things. So again, the property owner and builder are here, but with that, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit. Assuming it does get approved, it will then go on to the city council on May twentieth for, for their final approval.
So Brad, what happens when it gets annexed?
Uh, at that point, there's probably another, or several conditions and different situations that would come about. Anytime we would do this type of annexation, then we would have to look at existing, you know, zoning rules, but again, these properties are five acres plus, so by the time annexation actually would get to these properties, one would assume that at that point, further subdividing is occurring, because to have a five-acre lot in city limits would be fairly...
Holy s...
We'll use that word, yes.
Nice work. I'm gonna go with the order. So, okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Gangler before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, open the public hearing. Anybody like to step up the microphone and address item three, eight, do so at this time. I know the owners, developers are here, if we do have something, we'll call you up. With that, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back, Megan.
I'm just curious if, if the conditions of the conditional use permit aren't met, then what happens in the report?
Like in any other...
I can't imagine that would happen, I'm just curious, because it looks like very nice.
Well, if they're kidding, if they're kidding, maybe.
Right, like, like any of our conditional use permits, they're always gonna be subject to further review and revocation, so if a conditional use permit, whether it's this or any other, were to ever be revoked, or otherwise not approved, of course, that's when the legal, the legal discussions obviously would occur. So to anticipate what would happen, I guess at this point, might be difficult to assume.
Move it, reset it.
I'm gonna see.
Ms. Sandy, move approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Three, eight passes. Three, nine.
Variance to access control regulations at nine, nine, nine Cedar Burrows Drive.
Uh, the property owner is in the audience tonight, if any questions arise. We did a two-hundred-foot standard mailing around the subject property for notices to invite to the meeting for any comments. Staff hasn't received any, any calls or visits from any of the adjoining property owners. So to give you an idea of where we're looking, a single-family lot that's located in the area that Quarry Development has been developing, as well as Thompson Homes over the past number of years. The westerly boundary is South Washington, and then the main east-west route on the north side of the overall development is Fifty-Fifth Avenue, so the lot that I have highlighted in yellow is the, the subject lot that is requesting a driveway variance. This next map will point it a little clearer. So right now, when this plat was approved, there was certain segments of various portions of lots adjacent, adjacent to rightaways that had access control placed on them. The more typical access control would be on Cherry Street, which is a collector's street, which carries heavier traffic, so typically, we like to limit the numbers of driveways at best on those collector's streets, whereas Luann Street is a local street. In speaking with some of the other staff that had originally worked on this plat, there wasn't necessarily anything that was that evident as to why we would have applied access control, other than to just mirror perhaps what we did on Cherry. Staff has taken this under consideration, and I'll show you another, the, the site plan before we get to it, but anytime we have access control on a plat, and it's asked to break the access control, they need to seek approval of a variance to the subdivision regulations. We haven't really had a lot of the residential, probably one of the more recent ones, I guess, Chick-fil-A, for example, when we had to redesign their driveway entrance, that plat had access control. So in this case, what the property owner is proposing is to build, you just have to reorient yourself. Now, we're, we're looking at Cedar Burrows on the bottom side, where the existing garage and home structure is located. On Luann Street, there is the, the access control I indicated. The property owner would like to build a detached garage in the backyard, which isn't altogether uncommon, however, in this case, with the access control, they're asking to provide or allow for a break, so they can get access to the garage. The site plan itself is still subject to inspections department review, if there's any variances that are gonna be needed for anything, would have to go through that, so really, what's being presented to you tonight is to, whether or not you would allow a break in the access control. Some of the things staff looked at in terms of the volume of traffic on these types of streets, since it is local, and since this is a, an accessory garage that probably will be used, you know, intermittently throughout the year, either on a seasonal basis, it's not the main driveway and garage for the property. So therefore, you know, again, staff looked at some of those scenarios, and we think that, you know, providing the driveway for the garage won't have a negative impact on the anticipated traffic volumes on some of these, these local streets. Again, the homeowner is here, I would turn it over to the commission for any questions you might have at this point.
Mr. Reicher.
Do we normally allow two accesses into one lot, one residential lot, or don't we care?
Well, in this case, had we not applied the access control, or pick any other lots in the general area, as long as they're abiding by, you know, building setbacks, those types of things. There are total numbers of driveways that are allowed on properties, but that's typically when you look at a wider property of how many access points to any one given street.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to step up and address item three, nine, please do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Reicher.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lunskey. Discussion, none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Three, nine passes. Three, ten.
Orders to annex lots four through eight, block two, and forty feet of vacated Fourth Avenue, North there of block two, Sunny Note, Dad Farms Edition, Bible Baptist Church located at sixty-three, sixty-seven Gateway Drive.
Mr. Gangler.
With this item, this is a voluntary annexation. Just a little information in terms of where we're at, of course, we're west on Gateway Drive, or otherwise known as Highway Two. Walmart would be off to the, the east of this picture. The main property on the north side of Highway Two in this area is Stefis Manufacturing. On the south side, the area that we have highlighted in blue is the Bible Baptist Church. We also have some other businesses in this area, we have New Vision, we have North Valley Creamatory, Don's ABC Seamless, and then just to the west of Bible Baptist, we have RDO. So as we talk about annexing Bible Baptist Church, in this case, the planning and engineering departments are also talking about annexation plans for the surrounding existing businesses. For years, water has been in this area available to only a few certain businesses that requested it. So Bible Baptist, back in nineteen ninety-seven, entered into a, an agreement with the city that they would get city water service, mainly fire protection at that point. However, they had to agree to not oppose to be annexed. The city never did pursue annexation, probably for a number of reasons, primarily one, that we never had sanitary sewer, and full city services that we typically like to offer properties when we do annex, so now that sanitary sewer is in. The church representatives approached the city and indicated that now is the time that they would want to, to get annexed, so in their case, which that means now they can get off of a sanitary septic system, mound system, whatever they do have in place, they can hook up to the city sanitary service, and then be subject to any specials that are associated with any of the infrastructure out here. And again, it's important to note that staff is also working on, again, a plan to try to pursue the annexations of some of these other adjoining businesses, whether that might be through other mechanisms of annexation agreements, or whatever it is we come up with, will ultimately be brought back to the, the commission and council. So with that, staff does recommend approving the annexation of the Bible Baptist Church, which then will be forwarded to the city council on May twentieth.
All right. Any, any questions? If anybody wants to enter our fair city, come on in.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Reicher. Discussion, seeing no hands, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, three, ten passes. See, I, we could've saved you a lot of time there. Three, eleven.
Orders to annex portions of I-29 not previously annexed.
Mr. Gangler.
Uh, with this, as you see on the map, we have three sections of I-29 that are not currently annexed. Staff is recommending that we do annex. The first parcel is located on the northerly part of town, which will then, the annexation itself would go flush to... itself would go flush to one of the most northerly parts of the city limits. We have some of the main landmark businesses. We have Strata Corporation on the west side of I-29 in this area. Then we have an area that is still left as a gap, so to speak, on I-29, going from 17th Avenue South all the way down to just almost at the 32nd Avenue intersection. That land or that part of the right-ofway has never been annexed. And also, the last stretch that we're proposing goes from the south side of the interchange on 32nd all the way down to 62nd Avenue South. So this only affects what are the confines of the I-29 right-ofway. One of the biggest reasons why we're doing this is that anything in these areas that are not currently annexed are actually subject to the rural fire department or emergency response jurisdictions. So anything north of Gateway is the Mandeville Fire, anything south of Gateway is the fire, or I'm sorry, the Thompson Fire District, which we've been in talks with them. So not only are the rural fire departments in favor of this, but in speaking to Fire Chief Lorenz, he's also in favor of putting these into the city's emergency response jurisdictions should an event happen that requires our first responders from the city. So staff recommends approval of the three parcels to be annexed.
Any questions for Mr. Riker? Mr. Madacek.
Yeah. Is this going to extend your two-mile range?
No, sir.
It's not going to affect it at all?
Won't have any bearing on it.
We're on record on that. Thank you.
Even the parcel three on the bottom one?
Right, we're not going to use these types of annexations as a means to extend our extraterritorial zone.
Okay. Move approval.
Move by Ms. Riker, second by Ms. Sandy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 311 is good. 312, Ms. Ederson.
Ultra banner sign up.
No.
Enlighten us.
I'll try. During the construction season, Ultra is looking to place a large banner, a maximum of 28 by 28, onto their existing hospital wall facing Columbia Road. It's larger than we normally approve, which is why we've gone through the sign code appeal, and it's also up for a longer duration than we typically approve for temporary signage. However, there have been, there's precedents in the past as they've hung similar banners in the past for various national awards they've received for their cancer status or various other things that they've had in the past. It is a temporary sign, just to be up during construction, location to be on the new, or excuse me, existing building with a rendering to look like that. The image to be determined is, they're determining what type of concept or what scale of their concept, overall concept that they're looking to put on the sign, that's to be determined. But I can answer any question.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Ederson? Seeing none, any motions?
All approved.
Mr. Lunskey? Second by Frank, Mr. Madacek. Further discussions, seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 312 passes. Item 41.
Sign code amendment relating to UND sign overlay district.
Mr. Gingler.
I'll try to be as thorough as possible, but yet not get too into the weeds and then hopefully make it more of an interactive discussion without me going through it. I do have about 46 slides.
Start clicking, my friend.
Not 46. So for quite some time now, the University of North Dakota has been working with a consulting firm by the name of RDG, and they've been working towards coming up with what is referred to as the UND Campus Sinage and Wayfinding Master Plan. So staff has been interacting both with UND and with the consultants, and they've come up with, for lack of a better phrase, we'll just call it the master plan. So there's a number of different sign types in the master plan that we've looked at. So before we get into any slides, what we're doing is, I'm proposing that we take the current sign code that's allowed in the university district, which you'll see that there's some very archaic, non-functional signs throughout the ordinance, replace it with a sign overlay district that will encompass all the areas that are essentially under UND control, and then we'll talk about then the signs that will be allowed within that district. And I think really the heart of the matter is to really get to a cohesive, coherent wayfinding system on campus. You've all probably been on campus at some point like any other larger institution, and sometimes you can really get lost as you're driving in because you don't know where you can park, where you can't park, which building, which university, which college. So that's really sort of in a nutshell. And there is an individual from the university here tonight if there are any more specific questions. This is a preliminary sign ordinance, so you'll see it now. It'll go through council and then back again for final approval. So here's just some examples that are in the draft master plan that just shows some of the variety of signs that we have on campus. By no means are we suggesting we're replicating the two on the bottom of the screen that exist on the, we affectionately call the Ralph property. Those are there just as an example of what's out there today. And then there's other various smaller types of signs that are both on campus and then off-campus on some of the corridors coming into campus. So this effort really is to try to clean all that up as best as possible and have a sort of more of a coherent system. Here's some more of our favorite types of signs as we're driving along some of these areas. Can't really read them from the street necessarily, but they're out there, a whole variety of, whether it's parking or other types of regulatory or cautionary messages. Here's just some examples of what we show on the, for channel letters and those types of letterings that are on the buildings. Again, just an example of the wide variety of signs. So the boundary in red is not only the university zoning district, but it's also the district that is the university district signage. In terms of what is-
Brad, if you want this to be interactive, I'll just get to one of the things that I saw here, and that is the parking monument signs, which is your slide 37 and the one right before that, 35. It shows ground monument signs that are 11 feet tall and six feet wide. That concerns me with having pedestrians being blocked. I mean, I don't know where they're going to go. I mean, obviously, if they're against a building, that's fine, but if they're-
Should be easier to read.
Well, I'm just worried about having people behind them. They're not going to be at any intersections or any entrances to parking lots or anything like that.
Right. These signs, like any other signs that we approve, we have clear zone areas-
Right.
-sidewalks, intersections. So really, what this sign package is, is just, we're talking about what is allowed, and then when UND then furthers their plan specifically, then that's when staff does our normal administrative review. So we're not approving signs in areas that-
I mean, the one that really concerned me was 37, when you have, that they're parking monuments, that they're going to be identified as, and it's on your slide 37 if you want to go there.
I think we got a breakdown in the action. Technical difficulties.
But it's in our packet too, but-
Okay.
You see which ones I'm talking about? So if those are going to be by a parking lot, I mean, I just, I get very concerned with having a sign that big. You know, it's 60 square, 70 square feet on one side, blocking, you know, with nothing under, I like the ones that are up, you can see kids walking underneath them, that sort of thing.
Right, and then I think, I have some more slides that I've prepared outside of what was in the packets to give us a little more visual of-
Where these would be or how they would be.
Of how they look compared to like a pedestrian walking down the street. So we won't focus a lot, but there are a number of signs that are currently allowed in the university district. Again, they're very archaic. Ground monument signs are allowed, there's different types of directional signs, which we have some pictures of. This is what we typically show in code as our normal maximum ground monument sign, which is typically eight feet tall by 18 feet wide, which is what we see in most of our commercial districts. However, it is still allowed on campus. We have a few more signs. We have a building identification and directory sign, which we'll see on another slide here, maximum of six feet tall by seven feet wide with some limited area on the sign itself for maximum signage area. There are still some signs that are in code that never, have never been pursued by the university. We have rather large, two- and three-sided entrance signs that have been in code for many years, which you see here, which is sort of the popsicle-style sign, 17 and a half feet wide with the sign area itself, 18 and a half by seven and a half. Again, those are signs that really just have never been acted upon. Lastly, we have reference to a directional sign, which in this case is really no different than maybe a yard sale sign, maybe a little taller, maximum of four feet tall with the maximum of six feet of sign surface area. So again, these are signs that really serve no functional purpose anymore when we talk about wayfinding, directional, those types of things. So this is sort of the bird's eye view of the different land use categories that we have on campus, ranging everywhere from coming off of I-29 with aerospace all the way down University Avenue till you get to the EERC area, then of course, on the north, what we call the Bronson property, we have the new med school, the Ralph Inglesdottner Arena, so on and so forth. So this is going to be the proposed boundary then of the sign overlay district. So we incorporated what is existing in the university district, and then also, for consistency purposes, we've included this northerly part with the Ralph and med school area, which is University Village PUD, and then where the portions of aerospace and the Hilton Garden, that's another separate PUD. So again, to keep all UND-controlled properties in one signage district, I think makes sense to help them fulfill their goal of having a consistent signage and wayfinding system. However, that doesn't mean the existing ground monument signs that are out there today have to go away. This just allows some of the newer signs that'll be coming in. So each one of you should have this single-page handout in front of you to help kind of follow as we go through these four main categories. Building identification signs, parking facility, which would include a parking structure or a surface parking lot, directional signs, kind of self-explanatory in terms of typically for motorists along the roadways. And then we'll also talk briefly about some informational signs that are more internal to individual buildings and areas within campus. So when we talk about the building signs, these are what's being proposed. So the standard, this building identification monument sign, maximum to the very peak, as you see, is 10 foot by eight inches. The maximum total base is five foot nine inches. What we would consider the sign's surface area is roughly eight feet by four feet minus whatever square footage would be reduced from the arc in the top of the sign. These signs, which you also see, will be able to use for parking lots and those types of things. Come in two different versions. We have one that's just a complete static sign message. Another option is to allow a smaller digital readout to be able to provide some additional information in terms of maybe an event that's happening at a particular building, if there's a parking message, those types of things. They're very limited in their abilities of what can be displayed on it, and things like off-premise advertising, we all know that that's not going to be permitted on these types of signs. And then we just have some smaller, more subdued signs for ground monument building identifiers, same size of the sign except wall-mounted.
Brad, can I just stop you there? So you just kind of blew by the no advertising off of-
On the digital aspect.
But they're doing that up at the Ralph. So is the Alumni Association now going to want to put, you know, at the Garecki, you know-
Yeah.
Start scrolling their donors or-
I think that's an important question, but what I don't want to do is cloud these signs with those. Those are not only the two signs outside of the Ralph, but as well as the sign that the city has at the Alaris. Those are held under a different sign code in terms of what they can and can't do on those signs, where these are strictly, as will still indicate in code, that off-premise advertising is not permitted.
Okay, so we're not, so the code will specifically say no off-premise advertising? Now, so off-premise, does that mean the Garecki can't advertise something happening at aerospace?
I think in this case, we have to define on and off-premise as campus-wide.
Right.
Because that's the whole purpose of the wayfinding, is to get somebody perhaps from one side of campus all the way to the other.
Yep.
So those could be intermixed.
I think we just want to be careful about that, that we allow, just make, we allow as much as we can without getting Mr. Wasbik advertising on every building on campus.
And I think that's a reasonable, reasonable request. So as we, I've identified it as exhibit one, that's just the first category. Then if we get into more of the close-up look, these are the same style of signs that we just looked at in terms of relative to a pedestrian. And when we look at 10 feet, or 10 foot eight inches up and, you know, five to six feet wide, I think what comes more clear is now when we take that style of ground monument sign, sitting next to what is allowed as the standard ground monument of 18 feet by eight feet high, and then the third sign on the far right, seven feet by six feet. Staff has taken into consideration a lot of these different sizes and whatnot, and I guess I'm comfortable proposing that we allow these new signs to come through, especially in light of what is the overall magnitude and mass of these signs when you look at the building identification monument, which is being proposed versus the standard ground monument. I think it's a lot cleaner environment, a lot less clutter in terms of these masses of signs. So I think what they're proposing, I think, is in keeping with, you know, some of the aesthetic things that we would typically like to see.
So Brad, now we have our typical setbacks for signage and where they can be, and where they can be relative to intersections and things like that. But my concern again with these, the building identification signs that you show on the right there, right now, they're pedestal. I mean, they have, you can see underneath them, and with these, you wouldn't be able to see that. And we all know pedestrian traffic at UND is everywhere. I mean, it's not like we have it everywhere else where we can, you know, predict where people are going to cross streets, and we keep them back from corners, we keep them back from that sort of thing. Do we have to be concerned at all about, you know, these kids that are crossing in the middle of streets and things like that popping out from behind one of these signs?
Well, there's a couple of things going on here. First, you know, we're going to treat these as we would if it were any other commercial type environment, where we have to place them accordingly. But at the same time, we know that University Avenue now is under, getting underway for the massive reconstruction, which the council has been briefed on before on campus in terms of how that new design now is, for lack of a better term, we've used it before, but funneling the students to certain areas to cross because now there's going to be permanent medians in the middle in terms of, you know, the raised planters and urns and those types of things. So I think a combination of those safety features that are being built into the reconstruction versus now being able to place these signs in areas where we can hopefully avoid any types of those visual hindrance things that would occur.
Is UND adamant that there not be any break in them at all? I mean, can they, I mean, it would seem like that one on the far left, you could put a two-foot or a foot break between the base and the, I don't know if you've talked to him about that.
Not specifically, just, again, sort of that underlying premise of this is sort of the theme that they're working with to create that campus-wide consistent.
And I like it all. I mean, I, looking through this packet, I like all the signs and whatnot. It's just, that one is just the one that concerns me.
As now we go into the parking identification, again, same style of this new ground sign, same dimensions as we just looked at for building identification. Then when we get into parking areas, on all these slides that are coming up, every time you see a pole such as these, typically it's going to be a light pole or another pole structure that's on-site. So whether it's these or some of the other signs we look at that are pole-mounted, they're all like any other signs that we do have to be proven to be able to bear the wind load and all those types of things. and all those types of things. Any of these signs that are going to be in the public right-of-way, that are on a light pole, has to go through the same process that we've always gone through with banners on campus, whether they're on campus or downtown. There's some agreements that are being produced on a parallel track to handle some of those technicalities of these signs being on city light poles. But really, the function of this sign ordinance is just to recognize the sign itself in terms of size and dimensions. So these are just some of the examples of what we could see relative to identifying parking areas. Again, it could be parking structures or surface parking lots, all the way down to individual signs that probably would be placed on internal light poles within, like we see at the Alaris and at the Ralph, where you have individual aisle identifiers for parking. Here's sort of the close-up look relative to the standard six-foot-tall pedestrian on the safe distance in terms of from at-grade to the bottom of the sign. Again, we do have some digital potential, just as we do on the ground monument signs. And again, these are going to be subject to the same no-off-premise advertising, all strictly campus-related advertising. And then the directional signs, much like the previous signs, these again would be mainly focused on identifying the major facilities, buildings, different colleges. They're all standard in terms of size, it's just the messaging, some might have three lines, four lines, in this case, some might only have two, so it all depends on where they're placed and what the intent of the sign is to direct to. And again, another similar layout of what this looks like relative to a standard pedestrian. And again, just the size of all these are all going to be consistent, just what the messages on them is going to be the difference. And then the last category is informational signs. These are only typically, or these are included just so that we complete the whole sign package. As far as kiosk informational, we would see these in certain areas where the university wants to draw the attention of the pedestrian in front of a historic building or something that is caused to provide some information about a particular building or site. And then of course, we have assessable directional signs, bike facilities, you know, bus stop signs, and so on and so forth. So all those signs have been wrapped up into what you have in your packet as the preliminary ordinance. I've met with the city attorney to talk about more of the mechanics of how these signs are actually going to be identified in code. So the draft code that I have in front of you basically is calling out the University of North Dakota Sign Overlay District, and then the individual signs that we just looked at, the four main categories. And as I indicated in the staff report, there'll be some signs that are left in code simply because there's already existing signs out there. So like the big event center signs, that's left in code, we don't want to exclude it because technically then that makes them non-conforming. There's still going to be other uses that we look at out here, and all the university has been pursuing discussions with private entities to do P3, private-public partnership developments on campus, so we still want to allow some flexibility. But understanding that UND at the end of the day, as it controls most of that area that we saw on the map, there may be some cases where maybe a ground monument sign might be allowed, opposed to maybe what UND has for their sign, but those are going to be typically negotiated between the university and whatever private entities that they're working with. So I guess with that, I would open it up to any questions for now. Again, this is preliminary approval, it'll come back once council takes preliminary action for next month.
Brad, let me get this draft amendment, just if you just go up to five there, down page, number five, the first yellow highlighted one you have. On-premises business signs limited to flat wall signs. Total surface area does not exceed three square feet for each linear foot of lot frontage. So if you have 150 feet of lot frontage, you can have a 450-square-foot sign on the front of your building?
Theoretically. This language is taken from our regular B3 sign code where this ratio establishes, and it gets, it can get kind of convoluted. So theoretically, you could have larger signs. Could this, or should this language be changed? The reason why I kept it in as-is is that currently in the UD district, it does make reference to flat wall signs, but it strictly says cannot exceed 1% of the wall-facing area.
1%, where this allows 10, right?
10% of the facing area. 10% typically is where we're at with a lot of commercial development.
Okay.
So, you know, this could certainly be cleaned up to maybe just simply state that wall, flat wall signs are permitted, just so long as they don't exceed 10% of the building-facing area.
And that's what we do in regular commercial areas?
Regular, right, and then there's other ratios that we use, but that's kind of a...
That one just struck me, is that, I mean, you could get a really big sign there, so...
Any other questions for Mr. Gangler?
Yeah, we have preliminary, so yeah.
So we're going to be preliminarily approving this when we have all these appendices, which are to be determined, and we have no idea what they're going to be?
That is in there simply because I don't know if we're going to say it's appendix F, or G, or H.
But all the dimension limitations are in that?
Right, so the signs, as we're seeing them, and that's the part I was speaking with Howard about, is the dimensions as depicted is what we're acknowledging and approving, it's just that where, which appendix is the appropriate place in code to say, here are all the signs that are allowed in the university district. So it's more of a mechanical process.
So these exhibits, one through four, are going to be the appendix that we're approving?
I think that's what I'm trying to work towards, so that when you look at the code, everything is going to be, it's basically, what I'm looking for is a more modern, this is, for example, this is appendix F in the current code. It was probably designed with software from thirty or forty years ago, so I think we can replicate this type of appendix, whether it replaces F or becomes G, to be able to put more contemporary graphics in code to depict the signs. Whether they're just in the appendix or further defined by dimensional standards in the actual text of the code, I think that's again probably up to what Mr. Swanson and I can come up with them. We just always want to make it user-friendly as possible and not so confusing. So the substance of what you're approving tonight isn't going to change, it's just a matter of where in code it's going to actually appear.
Well, like for, for number one, for parking identification signs, what are the dimensions that we're approving? So it says, "The sign shall and design shall be limited to the dimensions shown in appendix to be determined." So we're approving that, exhibit two.
That's the intention, right. And again, I don't want to get over repetitive, like if we call out a sign here, say, here's all the dimensions, it can't exceed this, this, and that, and then replicate everything again. So it's just a matter of what, how we define it.
Here's my concern, I don't want to approve anything that I don't know what I'm approving. And number two, more specifically, I don't want to be, after having, I don't know how many months of meetings about electronic signs, and I see nothing in here about electronic signs, I don't want to be approving electronic signs that I haven't had a chance to look at. All this stuff that we just did with all the churches and schools, and we spent all that time on directional, you know, the electronic changeable signs, and what I'm looking at here is that's going to be called out in the appendix, I assume, right?
I think how we define this sign.
Yeah, so, well, okay, so I look at this sign, so you're telling me, if I look at the monument sign to the right, I would say one-fifth of it can be just letters? That's what I'm approving?
I think if we use this for an example...
Right, so it looks like about one-fifth of the sign is electronic, changeable, it's just letters, it's not video, it's not moving, it's, there's, I assume the whole time is going to be something reasonable, you know what I'm saying? I mean, there's a lot of things that I don't see in here that I'm giving preliminary approval.
Right, but I think in this case, so we know this isn't the same electronic message center signs that we just looked at with the other ordinance, the full video capability.
You think UND's not going to want those?
Please, come up. Step up the microphone and state your name, please, and for the records.
Mike Peiper, Assistant Vice President for Facilities. The main intent is the non-digital. Where the digital came into the discussion is, we have a few buildings like Garecki, Skaliki, where there's public meeting spaces. Right now, we use a lot of sandwich boards or zip tie. And so the intent is not to have full video or anything, it is to say, I'm trying to think of an event, like football camp parking, instead of having zip-tied sandwich boards out on Columbia and other areas. So there's no intent, and we have no issues if it's worded to have no, you know, full function video. We just want to change what the event is. And it's in a very limited number of buildings. Again, there's about three, four buildings that were identified that have considerable amounts of external meetings.
Well, and you haven't been privy to this, but we've been fighting with this for eighteen months on another project. But I, and I, I think it's great, I think you should use it, I think it can be handy for you. I just want to be clear what we're approving, because I don't want all of a sudden to walk out there and there's every sign is full motion video.
I, I think it hopes that we move this on as part of the motion, if that's at your discretion, but we can certainly, because we know all the language we talked about with the sign code in terms of defining what the purpose of, you know, these aren't going to, the purpose isn't to design these to be the full video board and those functioning elements that we saw on some of these other signs. So I think staff could probably easily come up with that language to define what is allowed on, basically explain the university's purpose of what they want to do on these signs, and as Mr. Peiper indicated, is just to display an event or information that's happening on or near that location. I think that's something staff could easily probably incorporate into the next draft as it goes to council.
Move by Ms. Andy. One second.
Do we have to put that in the motion?
Sure we could if they're...
Alex, if you're concerned about that, would...
Do you want that in the motion, that they clearly define?
Well, I'm just, yeah, absolutely, I mean, if that's what we're going to approve. But there's not a single dimension in this thing. I mean, there's not a single standard in this. You're putting four pictures and, and the only limitation I see is the 450-square-foot sign they can put on the side, on the front of a building.
But it, well, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, but you know...
I have those, and I have those dimensions, so those are going to be the max.
Correct.
So they can't go above anything that's in those pictures.
Right, what's defined as the allowable sign types is what, again, going back to the other sign diagrams that are more crude, these are obviously more detailed, and I think that's the intent, that's what UND is asking for, and I think in terms of having all these dimensional standards already physically shown in place, I think it makes it that much easier to be able to define what is allowed on these signs. And again, staff can come back with the proper language to further refine the digital aspect of the signs.
And UND's thought through this, and that's all you want, is this, because these are incredibly limiting. What we would be approving, if it's just these exhibits, you then, from what I'm hearing, you can't go outside this design. You can't, you can't go an inch higher or an inch wider, or you're fine with that.
Yeah, so the intent, a couple of years ago when we started, you saw a mix of vintage signage, is one of the things UND did in the past was a, not a good practice, was they started with apartments and different things on outside signs. None of the signs are accurate, so we have to update signage, and as we build new buildings, we wanted to have a standard. So we're going to take this, we're bidding it out, we're getting pricing, so that we'll have signage by owner, and as we, we have eight different architects working on campus, we won't have a different signage package and all that. So our intent is, this will be our standard, we're all signage on campus, you know, to some point in time where somebody else wants to change it 10 years from now, but this...
So is it going to, so it's going to be this sign that I'm looking at?
That sign.
So...
And in terms of our, you know, our planning, our main focus right now is pedestrian wayfinding vehicles, there's just no wayfinding on campus, and so those are typically a lower-cost sign too, so we're going to hit that as hard as possible, as fast as possible. But with the new union just approved by the legislature, school business just received the $20 million match, those buildings, in terms of our specifications, will all specify these signs.
So not bigger, not smaller, these signs?
These signs.
So, I'm sorry, Brad, so we are just approving these signs is what we're proving? Not, not like we do with everything else, it can be in this range, bigger than this, or smaller than that?
Well, you know, to get into the semantics of that, I think, as with most of our codes, you know, we talk about maximums and minimums, I don't think, and it could be more clearly stated, but for example, if for whatever reason, it's maybe more fitting to only have a seven-foot-tall monument style of this rather than a 10-foot-eight, so long as it's smaller, I don't see why that would be an issue, because it's typically the size and the height that's an issue.
Right, so these are, so these will provide the maximums?
I think that's probably the most appropriate way to look at it, right?
I think what we're getting at is we, preliminary, if we, we all like this and are in favor of it.
Absolutely.
It's, we need to, you need to firm up the language and tighten it up a little bit so we can give this final. I would, I'm just not speaking for everybody, I see a lot of heads nodding that that's probably what we're looking for, because...
Somehow referencing our other sign code that deals with electronic signs, so if we do make changes to that, it does affect this as well?
Yeah, we want something in there on electronic signs, I think, for the due diligence we've all put in on those, whatever we...
Clarification of what this is, the function has, right? Yep, absolutely.
So a little paperwork on your guys' end, and I think we're all happy. So we have a motion by Ms. Andy.
Let's move it.
Second by Jane, Ms. Jowinski, as stated, as preliminary, and go back and look on that. Okay, further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, preliminary approval. Okay, with that, any further reports from the firing department?
No, sir.
Ms. Andy?
Just back to the neighborhood and the pedestrian walkway. Before that goes to council, I think it would be nice if there was another neighborhood meeting, and I also think it would be very nice if there was discussion with the school district. Because maybe they'll tell us we're crazy and that's what they want, and then the city council plan.
Well, I think as Ryan indicated, you're still waiting to hear back from...
Principal.
In terms of having another neighborhood meeting, I guess that's primarily going to rely on obviously timing and scheduling, if anything, could additional information be at least just sent out?
Well, actually, that would...
In terms of a notice of...
To just send them and showing them that possibility, so that they know that they can come to the council meeting and post their concerns one way or the other.
Not too sure what to do, so we just send out the same app, because the approval right now is that not in?
Right.
You want me to show that it was a possibility?
Well, what's difficult is the notice that was given for the neighborhood meeting wasn't what came to us, and so how do we gauge what the neighborhood and what the school would want if they didn't really have an understanding of what we were looking at? Does that make sense?
If they sent a letter stating that this commission approved it without 43rd Street access, but that is still a possibility through city council maybe? So if there is enough public input to put it back in, city council can do it?
Well, can city council put back in what we have not approved?
Yep.
I see that every day.
I don't know the best way to handle it, I just, I think it would be nice...
You just want the public to...
I just want them to know, you know, we were close here on a vote, and so it would be nice to have more public input, because it was such a hot topic last time.
It was huge, yeah.
And so I just think it's important that we... And so I just think it's important that we continue to listen to them, especially when the developer is willing to listen to them.
Willing to do anything at this point to get this project going, which you don't want to hear every day.
Yeah, and I know it was mentioned, but I think in this case, it's not very often we do see a developer stick on board that long and be willing to give up, for lack of a better phrase, things that they would have otherwise wanted. So I think that was different than what we would normally say.
Huge. Anything else, anyone? Good comments, good final comments? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this thing.
Yeah, one of it.
Yeah, we got one. We got a second on one of those? We got a second on one of those. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.